All right, boys and girls, it's Tuesday night, so it's city council meeting night. Let's see what happens here.
Mariah? Commissioner Lucy?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dwyer?
Here.
Mayor Kowski? Yes. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the October 3rd, 2023 regular commission meeting and the October 4th, 2020 revision in workshop meetings. Commissioners, do we have any amendments or a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, actually, in a second.
We have a motion and a second. Mariah, call for the vote, please. Commissioner Lucy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dwyer?
Yes.
Mayor Kowski? Yes. We have several public hearings to go down this evening and for the public. If anyone would like to speak before the commission on any of these public hearings, you will have three minutes to speak. Please direct your comments and questions to the commissioners and not to the staff people. If you do have any questions, we will do our best to answer them this evening. If not, we'll get back to you in an evening's time. And the first public hearing is the final reading of ordinance 2023-15, the police pension. Ordinance 2023-15, an ordinance of the City of Bellevue, Florida, amending subpar A general ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 3, Employee Benefits, Division 3, Police Officers' Recruitment System of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bellevue, amending Section 2-126, Benefit Amounts and Eligibility, amending Section 2-127, Pre-Retirement Death, amending Section 2-130, Optional Forms of Benefits, amending Section 2-136, Minimum Distribution of Benefits, Providing for Compliance with the Secure 2.0 Act, Providing for a one-time 3% cost of living adjustment to certain eligible retirees, Providing for codification, Providing for separability of provisions, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, and Providing an effective date. Sandy?
Yes, this ordinance was written by the police pension board and then approved by our city attorney. The actuary of custody that goes with it was prepared by foster and foster. It was approved at the last regular meeting on the first public hearing. And the short and sweet part of it is a 3% cost, one-time cost of living to all retirees and their beneficiaries, as well as it is bringing our retirement plan each compliance with it and change of benefits.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak for or against this ordinance? Okay, I'm going to close the public portion and turn it back to the commission commissioners.
For discussion purposes, Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2023-15. I'll say.
Give me a motion and a second.
I don't understand the discussion purposes. Hey, Chief, how long has Corporal Harrington been due to the police mission board spokesperson?
Until he's voted off?
I just wanted to let you know that his public speaking has gotten better and better every time he's gotten up there. I mean, because, you know, people are really, they get nervous when they start talking and watching from the first time he got up there to the last time he got up there. I was like, wow, that really is. So that's it. I just wanted to give him a shout out. That's that's all it's all.
I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, getting up in front of the microphone. That's it, man.
Anybody else? Okay, we do have a motion and a second. Mariah, call for the vote, please.
I'm abstaining from voting on ordinance 2023-15 because of its newer, too much special private gain or loss as I'm a recipient of the W Police Department.
Commissioner Lucy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Mayor Kowski? Yes. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing of the final reading of ordinance 2023-16, Housing Grants for Nonprofit Organizations. Ordinance 2023-16, an ordinance creating Chapter 45, Grants to Provide for Certain Nonprofit Organization Grants, Creating Article 1, Housing Grants for Nonprofit Organizations, Providing for Discount of Impact and Administrative Fees Regarding Certain Nonprofit Organizations, Charitable Home Construction Projects, Providing for Purpose, Providing Definitions, Defining Criteria, Defining Discounts, Defining Approval Process, Providing, Providing for Recapture of Grant Funds, and Providing for an Effective Date. Commissioner Goldman?
I know this is under me, just because I was the one that brought the tunnels to power thing here, but it's as we approved it last, last meeting as well. But it's for any, any organization that fits the criteria that was laid out by staff and reviewed by attorney. That's it.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak for or against this ordinance?
Are you guys seeking people to do this? Like, are you looking for like, who is it that builds the houses? Habitat for Humanity? I mean, are you guys actively looking for people to take advantage of this program? Like for veterans, building houses for veterans, homeless vets, or something like that? I'm just wondering where, where you're trying to go with this is all. Are you making this so that people like that can do this? Or are you actively looking, or is it a little bit of both? I was just wondering about that.
I think it started with the request for towers.
Yes, there's a veterans organization that reached out to us and they have property in the city and they would like to build a house for a Gold Star recipient.
Okay.
They came to us because practically we wanted to work with the fair to any organization that was doing something of like kind, whether it's Habitat for Humanity, and we're offering it to the once a year, one, one per year, so it wouldn't have a negative impact on the water and sewer system. That's, that's the way.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And I imagine if this passed, they could probably use that idea, put it out there publicly and basically paint it on the website so that organizations are aware that we never alter the opportunity.
Informally, Sandy has already kind of thought about creating a list of people that are like, hey, yes, well, we've already fulfilled the obligation for the, this year, so we'll put you on the list and reach out to us. So she's already kind of thinking about that.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this topic? Okay, I'm going to close the public portion and turn it back to the commissioners.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 2023-16.
Give me a motion and a second. Mariah, call for the vote, please. Commissioner Lucy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dwyer?
Yes.
Mayor Kowski? Yes. The next item on our agenda is the first reading of ordinance 2023-17, Construction Noise. Ordinance 2023-17, an ordinance amending Chapter 38, Article 2, Regarding Nuisances to Act Sections 38 through 45 through 38 through 48, Construction Noise, Providing for Definitions, Providing for Exceptions, Providing for Enforcement and Penalties, and Providing for an Effective Date. Shawna?
Yes, at the last meeting, construction noise was discussed and a motion was made to redraft the construction noise ordinance with no restrictions on work hours Monday through Saturday and having no commercial construction allowed on Sundays, with provisions for emergencies such as natural disasters. Staff person has a motion to, for approval.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak for or against this ordinance?
Well, and again, I'm, I'm going to have to bring up the fact that you're, you're, and I like the fact that last time you, you've kind of flopped both ways on this a couple of times and other people are noticing that because you're trying to do what's right, I think. Because you're like, well, wait a minute, we're limiting people's income that, that work on Sundays because there's some people that that's a, that's a double timed day for them. That's, that's a lot of money in their pocket. And the fact that you've gone kind of back and forth, I'm, I'm getting some emails about that. And I hope you err on the side of caution in this endeavor because there's already, because some construction people that are saying, wait a minute, how come I'm just not hearing about this? So they're, people are starting to take notice and as I publish more and more, they're going to take a lot more notice. It's coming.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak for or against this ordinance? Okay, I'm going to turn it back to the commissioners.
Mayor, good question. This is the first read, correct?
Correct.
I'll do it since I don't read.
It's the first read.
But I just wanted to say, if all the construction people that I deal with, I haven't had any complaints on doing this to a big problem. I don't know about anybody else that's done that.
I've done a little bit of research on it and I find that a lot of municipalities have their own set of codes as to when they work and when they don't work. But I did happen, I put in the internet, which I don't always trust, but I did put in, is construction allowed on Sundays in Florida? And in May 1st, 2023, it says Sundays and legal holidays and town observe holidays, work not permitted. All construction work is prohibited. Now, whether that's a law or not, I don't know, but that's what came up. But I do know that municipalities do work on Sundays. So it might be something we might have to do a little bit more research in to see if maybe there's a law that says they can work on Sundays.
Yeah, Fred, could you look into that before our final reading?
Sure.
This time is not too complex, this year.
Well, the big thing is, you know, even if we pass it, you know, months from now, we get a lot of phone calls, complaints, we can revisit it and make adjustments and but, you know, let's all talk about, you know.
I think it's kind of.
Give me a break.
Kind of lost out, but after research, I'd go either way, you go to the fact that some municipalities do work Sundays and then it says that it can work Sunday. So I would abide by the law that says people say you can't, but I think I want to go where the way the commission wants to go.
Shawna, one of the concerns that I have is enforcement. I realize that if we pass this ordinance that the developers are going to be informed of the new rules. However, we can't guarantee that they're all going to follow that or that their subcontractors are going to follow that. So that leaves us with a Sunday with no code enforcement officer.
That was my first thought.
So, and for that reason, I have gone back and forth on this. I really, I really flip-flopped because I do feel for the people who live next to these construction zones and the new housing. And I know that it's, you know, it can be tiresome for them to have to hear that noise. But I, I have to say that in, when the rubber meets the road, enforcement is going to be the issue. And so in the interest of less government and protecting personal property rights, which is what I always fall back to my core values when I have a hard time making a decision on something, I'm probably not going to vote for this, but. Anybody else?
Funny, I use the exact same criteria when I, when I say things like, I vote for workers. I, I should be able to enjoy my, my personal property and we're not talking about landlords and we're not talking about house painters. We're talking about permitted construction, which means they have to be fully permitted. And I don't necessarily want it to 6:30 on a Sunday morning here in the concrete truck roll up next door because my neighbors pull the permit to have their drive fully done when they get done during the week. It's not just about developers. It's about any permitted construction work. The citizens deserve to have at least one day where you consider that they can enjoy their personal property. Because, you know, it can get bad, especially, you know, as we get more and more developers and we already have one person come in, there's not even a citizen complaint about just the sheer volume of noise. So I, I, I think, I think that the citizens deserve, even if we're a small town charm, then we should at least have one day where there's just not an abundance of air hammers.
I, I think, again, I'm just concerned how, you know, that's great, but how are we going to stop it? I mean, it's Sunday, so out there, they're working. Is the police department going to take the two officers that we have on duty and have them constantly go over the construction issues?
I'm glad you asked that question. I'd answer that. We are going to do it the same way that every single government does things. We have something in place, someone's going to show up and they go, hey, you have this on your books and I can't get it enforced because you don't have code enforcement. And then at that time, we will actually address it by telling our code enforcement, hey, guys, we need to have somebody on call the same way the public works, has somebody on call in the event that something happens. Water main breaks, you know, line goes down. Oh, hey, you know what? Chief gets a complaint. Then he beeps, beeps, because he calls the code enforcement. I'm sorry.
Next up, let me know.
You know, calls the code enforcement person on call, they go out and write the report and they file for their overtime.
Just once you add stuff to that, we wouldn't call out, we would have our show.
Okay, I mean, but, you know.
We would write, we would advise them of our code because chances are they don't know the code. And then write the report to Shawna to follow up.
No, no, I, I understand. I'm just saying that there are better things that our officers could be doing. Which is my, my personal opinion.
Absolutely.
You know, and then, of course, we now we highly have our law, our code enforcement officer on call and then that makes our, our costs increase and the next thing you know, we're raising our taxes.
I would love to see, okay, you know, I'm going to ask for a cost analysis of what it would be first. Another first person would be on call for, you know, I, I, you know.
Well, this is where it starts, so, you know, and then it's going to be something else and it's going to be something else. You know, we're already talking, you know, we already started with code enforcement four days a week. Now we have the code enforcement five days a week.
That's true.
And now we're talking about.
But we don't also have code enforcement, doesn't have to work 10-hour days. They can work five, eight-hour days. It'd be, it'd be the same as the four 10-hour employees. So the cost of purchase should be the same. The cost, the net cost should be the same.
Well, Chief said you name it, we don't have to.
I know, the mayor's comment is, at that speaking, the police would.
I'd follow up on it there.
I love it when we do the philosophical discussions, to be honest with you. This is where I'd really, really enjoy hearing people's opinions.
The people that are from, in, throughout the city have all been in favor of the no work day that I spoke to.
Same.
And as the chief said, if the officer, if, once I'm sure that the word gets out, I don't, I don't think it will be that big of an issue where we'll have officers being tied up with it for too long.
Well, like I said, if we run into a problem with it, then we can.
If our ordinance, there's no work on Sundays and Florida law possibly says no work on Sundays. I understand the reason why we just can't have a little deal with that.
Mayor, if I may, before you read this, I'm unaware of any state law that prohibits it. However, I learned a long time ago not to answer questions like that off the cuff. And so I will research it and I will have a definite answer that I'm certain of at the next meeting.
Anybody else? Mariah, call for the vote, please. We need a motion. Do we have a motion?
One second. A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mariah, call for the vote, please. Commissioner Lucy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dwyer?
Yes.
Mayor Kowski? No. The next item on our agenda is the public hearing for Resolution 23-12, Restated Budget. Resolution 23-12, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Bellevue, Florida, restating the adopted budget for the City of Bellevue for the fiscal year 2022, 2023, and Providing for an Effective Date. Sandy?
Yes, before Marsha, she, of course, you know, finances in the middle of trying to close out our last fiscal hearings. It's just part of it. We true up the accounts, both revenue and expenditures. So this is a restatement of the budget for the 2022, 2023 fiscal year.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak for or against this agenda item? Okay, I'm going to close the public portion and turn it back to the commission commissioners.
I'm motion to approve Resolution 23-12.
Yeah, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mariah, call for the vote, please. Commissioner Lucy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dwyer?
Yes.
Mayor Kowski? Yes. The next item on our agenda is Resolution 23-13, Statewide Mutual Aid Agreement. A resolution providing for the adoption of the 2023 statewide mutual aid agreement. And that's under the heading.
Yes, this is actually the first one that we approved statewide. This is 2018. This is a replica of that ordinance. Once approved, it will be forwarded to Marin County Leadership Management and all of the agencies in Marin County. We forward it at one time to the state.
Mayor, I'm in. It's a resolution. Sandy, this focus, not her one, it's a resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to bring it up.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak for or against Resolution 23-13? Okay, we're going to close the public portion and turn it back to the commission commissioners.
And there, do we have a, Mayor, you can just do it in the case of an emergency? Because I didn't see that one.
That's in our.
That, all right, so, okay, I just want to make sure. Didn't need to be involved.
Yeah, because what we did was we were allocating basically the state requirements and you don't necessarily need something declared for them to step in.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I'm motion to approve, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you for the session. Mariah, call for the vote, please. Commissioner Lucy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dwyer?
Yes.
Mayor Kowski? Yes. The next item on our agenda is the scheduled discussion topic for garbage can removal. That's under the commission agency.
Well, I know everybody heard me talk enough times about this and I still think it's something we need to look at. We want the city to look nice. I don't think garbage cans lined up our streets takes our city to look nice. And I like to have an ordinance saying that they have to remove them at least after a day. And I don't think that's asking too much for residents to do. We now have a code enforcement every day of the week, so it can be looked at. And I think it's something that we ought to consider for the ordinance in saying so. Now, just, just quickly, Sunday I ran out just through Cold Ridge. There was 36 of them out there. That was Sunday, I'll pick up this 30th.
How many residents, how many houses were there?
I went through everyone, every street.
But how many houses?
Oh, I couldn't, I, I, so we had 36 storms, failed a lot of roads, just over. And actually, during that storm we had, a lot of them were knocked over. We were on this long, long streets.
But I know it was mentioned at the last meeting, people on that side of the road where I would have garbage picked up on Thursday. You mentioned we have a code enforcement officer on Friday, but we don't have one on Saturday and Sunday. So I'm at my can on Friday. I'm not in violation.
Can I address that? In the ordinance that was presented, which is what was it, an attachment? It was written so that all garbage cans must be removed by 8 o'clock AM on the day following the collection by the French's, French's, French's. If it's picked up on Thursday, it would have to be in by 8 o'clock AM on Friday. But that's, I think that's where there was some confusion.
I thought it was 24 hours.
Not according to what you wrote, what, what was presented and discussed.
I, I remember 24 hours.
Really, that was discussed.
Three, four o'clock, yeah.
Yeah, that was discussed with 24 hours. What was in the ordinance that was presented was by 8 o'clock. And I know that they, the garbage company does kind of go back and forth across the highway. They do some pickups on Monday and so on Tuesday. You don't let them come on any of those days. Yeah, I'm not sure.
They do Thursday on that time, I mean, Monday on that time, Thursday on the.
So Wednesday's recycling.
Wednesday's recycling.
So if they were, if they were scheduled for a Monday pickup, they might as well get garbage cans out. I mean, I mean, I don't know if the garbage cans were out.
Because I've mentioned before, I don't think it's going to be that big of a problem. I think once people learn that we're supposed to bring the orderly fails in, I think they will. But right now, I don't think anybody understands that. Because we don't have the work in sight. But if we did have the work in sight, they start bringing it in, they'll probably go ahead and bring it in. Maybe we'll have a character once in a while leaving out there. But I just don't hate to be the problem. Go ahead.
I don't want to.
But you have to.
All right, well, then I have to start by saying, Ron, you're proving the mayor's point. Okay, I sit here to say things like, hey, you know, code enforcement go out because of, you know, construction noise. But now you're saying that there's 36 cans that are out the day after, which means our code enforcement person on Friday will be running around doing nothing but writing garbage can citations.
You missed my comments two minutes ago.
No, I.
Saying that that in the beginning.
In the beginning, just like we a month or two before it all spread out, but after that, we shouldn't have much of a problem. Yeah, I know. I know. But she's smiling.
I'm sorry, I think, and I don't, I, I wish that it worked that way, but we have, I mean, the chief can tell you, we have a million laws on the books and just because we have them, I doesn't mean people are going to follow it. And so I wish that we could say, we're going to put this ordinance out there and everyone's going to say, oh, we're not supposed to do that. And so we're going to make sure we do the right thing, but keep them out.
Well, after they kind of go before a vote, you know, it's, it's a place, I think they'll do it right. But it's like I have the ordinance for the fourth, if you want it. Wow, if you don't pick up, that's simple. I put it forth enough times now. I just have to see your polls. My thing, I mean, trust me, I don't like it. I have people on my street to do it. My son has people on your street that does it. And I didn't count yours. But I rode, what was yesterday, Monday? I rode through Cold Ridge yesterday, your street. 18 houses, one house, and garbage cans. This next street over has 23 houses. There were four garbage cans. Surprising enough, when you go down around the curve, last time I looked, everybody had their cans out. Yesterday, we won. And then I drove through the rest of Cold Ridge and on an average of 15 to 25 houses on the street, there was maybe an average of two or three garbage cans. To me, that's not an issue. I mean, they're not pretty. Trust me, I agree, but I just don't think it justifies another ordinance, which they have to spend time writing up and then be enforced by somebody. And, I mean, we, we say it all the time, you said it the last meeting about the construction noise. We shouldn't be telling people what to do with their businesses. Unfortunately, we get into a position where we have to try to help people along. I just personally don't think this is something that, that is justified. That's just my opinion. Like I said, I've got them on my side of town. I, again, Sandy, I don't know how it changed or who said it or whatever, but it's been discussed up here many a time about 24 hours. If we put us in the Saturday, then we don't have a code enforcement officer.
And, you know, I, I know 24 hours was addressed and maybe that's why, I don't know who actually put in the 8 a.m. to get home, but I know that's what was presented to the commission. 24 hours, you just have to know when it's put out in order to, to call 24 hours later, you know.
I would think you would do 24 hours for garbage.
I would think you would do twenty-four hours for garbage pickup.
And I think that's why they said, I think that's why they said eight o'clock was just the next day, so there's a time that night, and a part of the morning.
But just, you know, with the other negative things we have in town going on, that we have to govern, I don't, I don't have any choice, it's just justified, and we, but that's just mine.
Is there anybody else, is there anybody who would like to put it back forth as, uh, ordinance?
I'm sorry?
I'm just trying to get a feel for the commission if we want, you know, Ron wants to put it up as an ordinance, Ray, do you want to do that?
The problem, like, I, I drove around too on Friday, and, the, I saw an issue by your house for sure, but I didn't see anywhere else, you know, there seemed to be people were on top of where your guys were. But, the, I know it hasn't happened very often, but over the years, there have been garbage trucks that have broke down, so the, the garbage truck sits out there, and they didn't get to it that day, they didn't have to come the next day, how, how do we know, we know exactly what time a person's garage got picked up that day? There, there's a lot of issues with it, and it, it's, it's just a, a lot of upkeep, I think, for our, our code enforcement officer, who, if, if you just keep everything on, it's, it's, you're not gonna have time for that kind of stuff.
We're gonna move forward with unscheduled audience, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak before the commission, if they have any? And then just for the record, I know you've gotten a lot of photography time, and for the public record, the gentleman doesn't give his name, that's why I don't ask cameras anywhere. Again, um, three minutes, I have a few questions.
And actually, people like the nickname you gave me, anonymous citizen, people picked up on that, they were like, you've got a new nickname, and I'm like, yeah, I didn't hear that at first until you brought it up. And speaking of hearing, last week I brought up that it's difficult to hear some of you guys, even on, I went to the website and listened to the audio, and when you guys are sitting up there, a hundred percent of what you say should be Leema Charlie, loud and clear, a hundred percent, and I'm not the only one having problems hearing. I thought it was just me, because I'm getting old and gray hair and all that nonsense, but there's other people that are saying, because I sent them to the website instead of using my video, and they said even your website, they couldn't hear, it was like there's some whispering going on back in there.
Is it everybody?
The consensus is pretty, pretty large that a lot of people.
We have, uh, some money allocated this year to have the, you know.
Because, because like I say, record-wise, everything that's done up there, you're acting under color of law, and so everything that's said is, is supposed to be heard. So with that, and I was asked to reread something and, and read it correctly this time. So I want to read the Tenth Amendment again, it says, "Power is not delegated to the United States by the Constitution, nor prohibited by it," I didn't stop there like I should have, "is reserved to the states and, and respectively ordered the people." And again, that just goes back to, to where we are as a people, as a nation, we've got this Article Six, that's the supremacy clause, that, that, that is absolute. I, I mean, I, I, I don't know what more I can do to, to really explain that, um, and the fact that you guys took an oath to the Constitution, this is kind of giving me feedback here. I want to read something a little bit different tonight, and we're gonna go back to high school here, because we all need a refresher course sometimes. Says, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed, endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed, that whenever any form of government becomes destructive to these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it, and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles, and organizing its powers in such form as to them, the people, shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness." And we'll continue on from there, but thanks a lot, guys.
Thank you.
But I, I appreciate about the audio, because I am getting complaints about that.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at it.
Alright, have a good night, be careful, guys.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak before the question? Okay, we're gonna move forward to our departmental update, we will start with